I'm gonna call this meeting, the Council Committee of the Hall, to order and Addie will take role call, please.
Cobb.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Sheets.
Did you hear? Okay, um, I need somebody.
She's here.
Let the record reflect that.
Oh, nevermind.
I need to have somebody make a motion to go into executive session. Councilor Cobb, are you ready?
Uh, one second, I will, let me pull it up. So someone else has it, uh, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to A, discuss with an attorney for the public body claims or disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending court action or in the judgment of such attorney appear likely to be the subject of a future court action or claim, and B, to consider the lease or sale of city-owned real property and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
So move. A second. There we are.
Role call pleasing.
Cobb.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Posh.
Here. Yes.
I'm also going to invite Councilor-elect Jessica Cohen and Joe DeWitt-Foy to join us in the executive sessions this evening. So they'll be joining us as well as those who need to be here for these executive sessions, so. Not everybody, or? Alright. Thank you, we're back from executive session. Addie, go ahead and make your, um, suggestion about how we handle legislation.
Yeah, so if you guys could just keep pretty brief to your questions on the first reading onlys. If you have questions between now and the fifteenth, you can always email them to myself, the directors, whoever you need, um, and then we'll go over that. For the 2026 budget, since we do have, um, a finance committee meeting on Wednesday, um, I'd just ask that you guys keep it brief in that discussion as well since we are running a little behind schedule.
So my concern is that we are running at a time of 2025. And normally, if we were earlier in the year, we'd be doing some assignments to committees. Is everybody comfortable with getting your questions answered between now and the fifteenth? On these first readings only, emailing your questions to directors and with a CC to Addie, I would suggest, and then bringing these back to committee of the hall for discussion rather than trying to schedule additional committee meetings? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Cobb. Cobb, alright. So, um, Councilor Posh, I know we wanted to talk about the budget. We are gonna be discussing it in finance on Wednesday. But I would like to know tonight, is there anybody that has adjustments as council members that they'd like to make for 2026 budget? Councilor Cobb?
Uh, yeah, I had requested, uh, an additional $100,000 be allocated to the planning department for art assessment in Noble and Taylor. I don't know if that has made its way to the amended budget or not. That was the only thing I had.
No, it hasn't been amended yet. You guys will have to make the motion for amendment. So I'm just gathering your suggestions for now, you guys.
Would we be doing that on the fifteenth, the amendments, actual amendments?
I would think so.
Okay. Councilor Posh?
I think there's a bunch of things we may be discussing in public safety as well as the finance committee meeting that might necessitate the need for an expanded budget. What might make more sense is come up with an understanding of the administration to pass the budget as is and get some of these additional things
Okay.
done in January.
Which is another plan as well. Councilor Sheets. October financials, we kinda need those as we go forward and look at our figures?
Yeah, so those are done, um, those were completed day to day.
Okay.
Um, we're just gonna review and get those out to you all tomorrow.
I'm gonna, thank you so much. Any other questions? Vice President Russell?
Yes, uh, I wanna follow up with Director Gonzalez. I wanted to make sure that, um, in the park plan that we have funds for the dog park that all of the residents want. Uh, I know we had a cost set aside for that when we did the presentation and all legis- uh, legislation, but I just wanted to make sure funds were set aside to make sure that the residents get their dog park.
So are you comfortable talking to him between now and the fifteenth?
Yes.
Gras, are you ready for an amendment on the fifteenth?
Correct. That'd be fine.
That almost, you need to do that, right?
Yes, no, that's fine because I'm just thinking about using the same figure that we had, that we had already investigated.
Yes.
Using that same figure and then if it's something that's more, then you all can handle that in the future.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
But I just wanted to just check with him first.
Okay.
We've been playing phone tag.
Anybody else? Alright. We are on, we're sharing Oreo.
Oh, we can listen to the UCF. We had your first reading for the document.
Oh.
Just go ahead.
I'm not gonna adjust to shorter.
Yeah, that'd be. Uh, for the first reading, approval requested. Resolution number 232, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Energility LLC to provide energy management services for the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio and declaring necessity this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. I would like to know why we need to do this? If, if that, if they have worked with Leopardo contracts before? Have they reviewed Leopardo contracts before? So that they can?
I understand your concern, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick it off to you because, I, I, I've read the emails that have concern about, you know, monitoring this.
Sure, and, and Chris can jump in at any time. I don't actually remember that they had worked with Leopardo previously, but they've worked with the same types of agreements which are statutory animal. And one of the things that they do is, we ran into this company as well as a couple of others based upon some recommendations from someone with deep roots in the industry. When we were looking last year at somebody to help us examine the agreement that we had been, the, the template agreement that we had been provided and needed to make changes to. And we talked with this consultant and invited them, but they were not able to turn things around on the timetable that we had to work with last year. So this year, as the project moves toward substantial completion in mid-January, we just want to be certain that we have somebody who can, with some expertise and experience, break down, um, from an owner's rep standpoint, all of the activities that have occurred and also to evaluate and measure, you know, the savings that are being generated versus the savings that were anticipated and, and so forth. So it's, um, it's actually under $50,000, but, um, the idea was that, you know, this is a council contract, really. The, the statute requires councils authorize the contract. And so, um, in anticipation of council getting a full update about the project, sometime likely next month, I think that the law department's feeling certainly was that this would be helpful to, to the law department, to the city, to the finance department in having our arms around the project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vice President Russell?
Just clarification. So, so, uh, the contracts come to council for $50,000 or $50,001? What's the, what's the threshold?
Even $50,001 comes to council.
Go to council.
That's the, that's the cheapest one. But this one is coming to council, not because it has to, but because it seems to.
Okay, but $50,000 even?
It's over $50,000 that triggers the requirement.
Okay.
Councilor Posh?
So this is legislation 232, correct?
Yes.
It has $100,000 in the contract.
Yes, that's, that was the authorization that I included in there in anticipation that there might be further M&amp;V reporting compliance going forward for the first year to make sure that guaranteed. So basically, the Leopardo contract concludes a performance guarantee that there is a certain level of savings for each energy conservation measure under the contract. And it uses a very particular type of M&amp;V, which is measurement verification, that is very specific to this, uh, energy conservation contract field. Energility is one of the handful of consultants and engineers that are approved by the Ohio Department of Development to conduct energy audits for companies that, for also local governments that wanna do things like apply for advanced energy fund grants. And Energility is one of the firms on that shortlist of the Ohio Department of Development. They were one of the people that responded to the proposal, so.
And which fund we're gonna use council funds with for that? Is that what you're saying? Or which fund is it gonna come in?
I think actually the, so the initial fiscal officers, officer's certificate was for $20,000.
Okay.
So that's all that's authorized currently. I wasn't aware of the, the change to $100,000. I apologize, I wasn't trying to slip one past you. That came out of the legal contractual line in the law department's budget.
Okay.
Cause there were some remaining funds there and it was important that we get this rolling.
Okay, so, anybody else? Okay. Ordinance number 242, ordinance to amend certain subparagras of ordinance number 011, 2025 relating to appropriations and other expenditures of the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st. We really need to have you explain these adjustments. I, I'm not the only one that has that question. So can you go through, um, as brief a narrative as you can as to why we're moving this money around the way we are?
Okay, so, um, so are you looking at the budget amendment sheet or? Okay, so the first is the advance for the state, that's the $40,000 the council had reached out about for the Coventry state. So that's what that is. The second is finance consulting contracts requesting $15,000 um, an amendment to the contract. The other thing is that the contract was at 45. With the amendment, it would be at 60. So it is see the $50,000.
Alright.
Uh, let's see, the 900,000 is, was previously included in the revenue replacement for planning. The first, the ARPA rate.
ARPA general fund is the community investment fund, so part of that's going to NAPA.
NAPA.
And then part of it's assuming we're going to Taylor Group and then the community management.
Quick question. Where, where have we been carrying this amount on the books? As an unencumbered part of our reserve?
It was, so, yes, it was unencumbered from 2024. We had approved it, it was not carried over as an encumbrance. And so it's been unencumbered. One point, I think 1.7 we approved, got approved earlier this year. And so there's still some funding that, um, has not been encumbered.
Okay. 3.8 million was the total.
Okay. Councilor Posh?
So it's 900,000, it seems like there's another close to 500,000. No, half a million that's going to ED? And, and what's the use of those funds?
It sounded to me like most of it was gonna be taken up with the, uh, business associations being formed, correct?
Yes.
I think we were anticipating 100,000 being left, between 100 and 200,000. They have some ideas of how to spend that.
I'm gonna mention, you mentioned at the committee, we are working on some guidelines for a signed grant program for our commercial districts. You know, it's been a clear need that never really has a great funding source and I think we have an impact across all districts in the city. But again, yeah, we're kind of ballparking somewhere in the low to mid $100,000 range is what's gonna be left after the merchant associations.
But this is for monies for 2025. So you're, you're encumbering them and you're spending them? Or you're going to roll those over to 2026?
I think most of it's gonna be rolled over to 26, yeah.
They're just making sure those funds were accounted for since they were revenue replacement. It's kind of sitting there and they're accounted for moving forward.
Right, now that we're ready to encumber part of it with, with NAPA, I think that's what triggered this budget amendment. Otherwise, it wouldn't came. At some point next year, I'll be included in that 26 budget measure.
Director Cobb, there's one more item.
Yes, so the last item is, um, an adjustment. And I think this is one we put on that bulletin, but this is, um, 241, this is the ARPA fund. There was an item that was left off of the 2024 encumbrance.
So this is the Kane Park, uh, accessibility improvements. So those weren't encumbered in 24 in our system. They're encumbered through MOU with intermediacy agreement. So for anyone at the state or anyone at the treasury wondering, we're encumbered but not in our system. So, uh, this could, just gets in the budget so we can help in that purchase order. We're just already started, so.
So quick question. To the extent that we were believing that we had, let's, I'm tossing a number out, $30,000 in unencumbered funds, we really didn't have 30, I'm sorry, 30 million in unencumbered. We really didn't have it. We've gotta pull those amounts out.
This time next year, the compensation this semester.
No, on, on, on the budget numbers we've been getting this year, showing that we had 30 million or whatever the number was in unencumbered, that would include these adjustments, if I'm being clear.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't think it did because it wasn't rolled over. So this particular item was not. But, um, those other items that we're still reconciling, no, that wouldn't have been included out. But.
So the 3.8, 1.7 came out. You already made that adjustment earlier. So I'd assume 2.1 might have been in that figure? I don't know, I'm just guessing.
With the 475?
And the 475, but it wouldn't have been included in the 2.1, yeah.
So we're gonna be looking really closely at the October financials because as of September 30th, the unencumbered general fund 101 balance was 38,610,104. Did it go down or up?
So it went slightly down, roughly 37, yeah.
Okay. Councilor Posh?
So based on the budget book, we were essentially having about $6 million left and I'm pulling it up right out of thin air. It's, it's, it's close, I believe. So if we go with 6 million, it basically means it's 101 and a half million less than that. So our, we didn't spend, we would have had an extra 6 million, but now we're gonna have 4 and a half million.
Above the?
And then, then what was budgeted for?
Anybody else? Okay. Next reading, next legislation, 240, ordinance 243, an ordinance, ordinance designating the Cleveland Heights Community Improvement Corporation, AKA CHCIC, as the agent of the city for industrial, commercial, distribution, research, development in the city, approving a related agency agreement with the CHCIC. Any questions on that one? That agreement was approved at the last CIC meeting, correct? By the, the CIC?
We've been working on it for like a year.
Yeah, so that, the committee is uncomfortable with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Order, resolution 244, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter, to enter into an agreement with American Builders and Applicators LLC, Certified Lead Abatement Contractor for the Use of Lead Safe Ohio, Grant Funds in Connection with the Abatement of Lead-Based Paint Hazards at Permanent Parcel Number 68721028, plus you, providing compensation therefore. Any questions on that one? It's one of these other projects that's really gonna make it safer for any children living in that dwelling. Resolution 245, resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement with Febrezi Trucking and Paving Company, Inc. as general contractor for the CH9, CH32, CH57, and CH58 SSO Control Projects. Any questions on that? Director Kling scales here if we, if we have any questions on that? Go ahead, Councilor Posh.
Is it 477,000 or 77,000?
It is 77,000. We had already received an, an authorization for the change of, for 400,000. But it went over, so it's an additional 77,000.
I get it, so it's, okay, thank you.
That's coming out of the sewer fund, so it's, it's covered. Resolution number 246, a resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement with Febrezi Trucking and Paving Company, Inc. as general contractor for the Yellowstone Sewer Separation and Water Main Water Replacement Project. Any questions on that one? Okay, resolution for, 247, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the 2025 Direct Bill Contract for Sanitary and Storm Sewer Maintenance Services, quote-unquote, agreement, extending the term and not to exceed amounts of the agreement to include fiscal year 2026 and ensuring continuity of services that help to maintain the city's sanitary and storm sewers. And this is an annual?
Yes, it is.
Annual resolution.
If I could clarify that some, uh, that extension is for, uh, work that wasn't, uh, performed under the 2025, uh, agreement. So we're asking for an extension for the 2025 agreement. And there should also be legislation on the agenda tonight for the 2026 agreement.
Okay.
I don't, so I don't think that there is. I think that this piece amends the 2025 to run through 2026 and increases the amount by $600,000.
Which includes savages.
Yeah, so it's a one, total of 1.2 million.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's not a separate piece.
Two for one.
Great. Resolution 247, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the 2025 Direct Bill.
Oh, we just did that one.
We did that one already. A resolution 248, resolution authorizing and ratifying an amendment to the consulting contract between the city of Cleveland Heights and Aislinn Consulting, or do they do the A.I.S.L.I.N.N.?
Aislinn.
Aislinn LLC for municipal financial services. And this is a contract that Mayor Cuda, could you just explain really briefly?
Yeah, um, it was determined by our city administrator that there are some work that needs to be done by the end of the year that, um, can be done by Andy Unatic if he was working 40 hours a week and not, you know, like part-time like he's now. And, you know, part of, big part of this is we, we gotta get the, the 2024 audit done. It won't be done, I, I wanna be upfront, it won't be done by the end of the, um, of, of this month, but we're looking at, Sean, you can tell me, I'm, end of, maybe February?
Yes, February.
Okay. So, um, this will go a long way to getting that done and then, you know, just close them out the year.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be a little hectic.
Two changes, right? From 25 hours per week max to 40. And then the total not to exceed goes up by $15,000 from 45 to 60.
Alright, moving on. Resolution number 249, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into, enter into a stormwater management program service agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Any questions on that? It's a truck purchase. Okay. Resolution number 250, a resolution expressing appreciation to Len Horowitz for his many years of outstanding service to the city and its resident, and its residents.
We're gonna move this one.
Yes.
Um, so when we do the amendments to the agenda, if we could move, if someone could make a motion to amend the agenda to include this under proclamations and honors.
Can I get somebody to do that?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilor Maddox. And we'll need a second on that as well, so. Alright, um, and that's it. Every, anybody, everybody ready to move on to the final?
Just real briefly, just for second readings, um, I do have the two severance pieces on here. No voting on that tonight. Um, the second reading for the Ohio Department of Development for the Advanced Energy Fund Grant Program piece. And I do have the budget on here as well for next year. No vote on that tonight.
We are voting on the advanced energy, so.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Jason's still sticking around, or?
So I think he's on the.
You don't need it right now.
Right.
Art's going everywhere, I checked it.
Alright.
He waited so patiently.
Alright, well, see you later, Jason.
Two weeks later. Two weeks later. Thank you all. Good night, Jason.
Alright.
Brian, shoot it to us just like you rehearsed it.
Alright, so I can make this quick, I don't have my council meeting this late.
Today?
So this is obviously a picture of pickleball. It's kind of player. Pickleball's very important.
Yes, it is. Very important.
I realize how big it is.
Are those our images?
Yes. So just to run down and to do a summary, it's really an update from the last one, so it should be a whole lot of new information, these numbers. Uh, as a reminder, uh, $38 million was allocated to, almost 3, $9 million was allocated to the city through the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, as you can see, a lot of it was broken down into sewer and water projects, infrastructure, safety, parking wreck, housing, and economic development. And don't forget our nonprofit projects. Sewer and water, 18.65 million was allocated. So I should back up a little bit. This report is based on our Q3 report, so it's accurate as of September 30th. So a lot has happened since then, obviously. That's, this information is good. Uh, so 53% of those projects have been expended. Um, I'd expect a lot more than that going out. Uh, quarterly report. Garden garages, uh, survey is complete. Coventry is still underway. This is the same with that.
Excuse me, the elevator at Coventry, is that included in this or is that in somebody else's budget?
I don't know, I'll have to ask the SMBs.
Yeah.
I believe it.
The elevator is in the Coventry.
No. So that, that, that elevator has been sent out to be repaired.
Is it?
Yeah, and the, the one at Coventry, and I don't know what's going on to be honest with you, with the one at Cedarly, it was working and now it's not. I know that there was vandalism, um, some kids, uh, were identified. You know, took the fire extinguishers and sprayed it. But then something happened to the, after it was cleaned up, something else happened to the elevator and unfortunately, it didn't work.
Was that the refurbished one or the new one? Was it new or refurbished?
Well, it wasn't new, it was refurbished.
Yeah, okay.
And the $50,000.
Okay, so it's not an easy thing.
Thank you, I saw that, I'm sorry.
Public safety, uh, these numbers have stayed the same, but we, some of the newer information is, uh, we received the first ambulance, so as of this time, um, September 30th, I don't think we've received it yet or paid for it. So, uh, the next quarterly should reflect that. Uh, but we have one and then the second one is beginning production soon, so we'll get it at that.
Quick question.
Yes.
The surveillance camera equipment, that is money in addition to what we receive from the county? Correct. Thank you.
Parks and Rec, uh, so a lot many went to Kane Park and we've seen a lot of parks there. Denison and then both North Ranger County, those are projects that have been done. So a little update from our Director Gonzalez, uh, Kane Park, a different town. Kane Park Restrooms, we, there's a piece of legislation tonight that's being designed right now and expected to end up next, uh, next year, end of, uh, summer, maybe fall next year, after the season. Uh, Kane Park Dressing Room, that's complete, roof repairs are complete. Kane Park Seating, which used to be known as the Strand, this is their schedule at the time. I wish I named this, so. I'm sure we're, uh, finishing stairs and installing metal railings, painters, and that punch list is fucking hell. Uh, Denison Park, pickleball courts are complete, turf replacement's complete, and the north one's complete. So really, everything on this list except for the restroom and, uh, Strand.
Does that mean the turf replacement, go-back-a-screen? Denison Park improvements?
Mm-hmm.
We've expended more than 221, then if we finish the turf field, is that right?
Likely, since September 30th, we probably spent.
Okay.
Housing assistance, so, um, this is the category that is, the council allocations, cause I, I bring up, let's say, well, a bigger slide. So let's say programming, you know, we talked about reserving that, so that's why there's a big gap between what's expended and what's budgeted because of that, using all the other ones first. Down payment assistance, uh, a lot more has been spent already, but that, time of September 30th, that's how much was spent. Down payment assistance, uh, a lot more has been spent already, but that, time of September thirtieth, that's how much was spent. And, uh, exterior repair, residential, uh, same same story. So all these started picking up after September thirtieth. Jobs were being done, but not. So let's say programming, so there's a lot of money out there for lead, um, that's drying up, it's gonna be drying up very soon, so the first category is, this has already been expended, um, eight hundred thousand dollars through the Board of Health, through the county, ultimately it's the state's funds. Government, um, lead safe childcare directly between us and the county, so without the Board of Health. Some of those are originally for childcare facilities, but most childcare facilities in the city don't have lead hazards, uh, especially the ones in commercial buildings, because they could take care of those at the time. Um, the State of Ohio Lead Clearance Program, um, some of these are being used for lead clearance, uh, this program didn't go off as smooth as we'd hoped, so there's been a little slow in getting clearance techs to complete jobs. There could be a lot of reasons for that that we can talk about here, but maybe a housing community meeting, we could bring, we could discuss them. Some of those ones are also gonna be used for clearance activities, so these first two categories, these funds draw up at the end of the year. This category, they they drop at the end of February, so we're working deal with, I mean, to make sure these parts fit in, because what we normally do is have a HUD program that has much lower, uh, uh, caps per unit, so we wanna use this money to get as much benefit to our residents. Um, so like we said, the lead clearance program at the bottom, this is the direct allocation from the city's ARPA. This is being reserved as much as possible until, how we use of all those other funds. And it's ten dollars for this, this, so actually, lead clearance will, the lead clearance program that the council allocated was supplemented, but wasn't completed through the state grant. These are just regular, okay, funds.
Are other cities getting lead safe childcare facility?
I think we really.
Lines, um, you know, pushed back.
I think Cleveland and Cleveland Heights were the only municipalities that got county funding directly.
I see, so.
As far as I, there's some nonprofits that also did that operate throughout the county.
Are are extensions being granted by the state?
So the state's indicated that there could be a path for extensions, we're not banking on that, so we're gonna spend as much as we can, it shows much progress. There is a chance we'll have to return some money just 'cause, you know, we spent well over a million dollars in twenty twenty five, we normally spend like three hundred thousand dollars on lead projects, the same staff, so.
Did you say we have to give some back?
There's a, there's a possibility, but we're doing everything we can to do. I know, this would be a first.
I would be really disappointed if we did that, I mean, let's mo- let's advertise the program, let's really.
That's not, that's not.
Publicity. TV commercials.
It's more about the speed of, so there's only so many contractors that have to be tried.
Of course, I'm sorry.
We've had experiences with someone, some contractors that worked with, so.
No.
Yeah, become again, at least.
No.
That's the bottleneck, is contractors have the past needs to do this project in time. But the good thing is, council allocated funds, uh, that are, are city ARP, but don't have the same deadline.
Right.
So any of those projects that might fall out of those grants, we have a backup.
Thank you.
So those, if you're listening and you're on the list, don't worry, we still get to your project.
Thank you.
Down payment assistance, so, so far the, you know, a couple slides ago, I said hundred five thousand, but we know there's been ten home buyers that have already received assistance through H R C's program. Um, this program's very popular.
A lot of applications.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good thing.
So, Councilor Maddox.
Do you by chance know how many folks didn't get approved that might have applied for this program, just out of curiosity, or does happen?
I'll find my head back and find out. I feel like not a, so when they get to us, they've gotten to a stage where, uh, they're almost being approved. I'm sure people have put in inquiries and they consider that they never got, they got denied or something, but an actual denial, we haven't denied.
I didn't think so, that's like, that, and that, that's a, that's a, that's what I, that's what I'd heard, I just wanted to make sure.
They might have just, they might have not had the proper, uh, eligibility requirements or not the right paperwork, and stopped and gets us.
Could you get us that figure, by the way, that'd be really important for us to know, if you can get that figure, if anybody didn't get what they applied for.
Yeah, as far as I know, they haven't, but I'll, I can verify.
But can you verify that with H R C, right, please?
How many more could, I mean, how much more money is in this program too?
So, seven fifty, so we probably spent around three hundred, yes, so. Four fifty, so not a fifteen.
But we don't have a deadline of twenty twenty.
No, so the first, uh, two hundred fifty thousand, I think, or maybe it was just a hundred thousand, was actual art, but the rest is repurposed, so.
Okay.
The general fund. Yeah.
Councilor Maddox.
Yeah, that's, that that's the deal for most of these projects.
And that, we did it that way, 'cause we know they take a while.
Have you heard any rumors, uh, the county supporting some of these programs if municipalities have approved them? I was advised that they're thinking about going in and assisting the fir- the home buyers further if they've already been approved by the municipalities in a program like this. Have you heard anything like that?
No, but there's a lot of different down payments programs, especially at bank, the bank level, they're much less generous, but, um, they're usually layered together if they can. Especially since in the last fifteen years, banks have got better at accepting, uh, subsidized down payment assistance, some banks in back in the days.
So we need a council president, we need another commercial for people to come buy homes.
Yeah. Well, we couldn't buy them.
This program is fairly healthy, we, so it's ten thirty thousand is the cap, that's probably part of the reason why it's doing so well. In the past, it was a ten thousand dollar cap, and with home funds with the source we use, there's a lot of requirements. Um, when there's like a cash buying situation that was going on during the pandemic, we were getting zero applications, because uh, low mod buyer is competing with a cash buyer. The requirements for like FH A inspections or stuff like that are so much more.
Didn't we, I'm, I'm sorry. Didn't we move that up when, um, uh, Stark, right, was building those properties and wanted that gap funding with those properties?
Um, no, I think we did it after that, because I feel like it was a different conversation, but it definitely helped the situation.
Because I know that's when, that's when that actually started, the gap funding.
Yes, what they do is just the increased cost of housing and the competition that regular residents have with investors.
Okay.
Councilor Maddox.
I, I just wanna use this as a soapbox, I know I'm rolling out of here in like thirty days, and so I, I wanna tell the, the mayor and the council to please consider taking a look at this program. I, I know I've discussed linking it to what our C I Cs are doing in the community and our financial institutions, and I haven't had an opportunity to really talk about that in our finance committee meetings, but for us to own property and give so much funds to our, our community development corporations and they're building these homes, we've got to find a way to connect our own residents and people with these down payment assistance to those homes, those, those city home properties, and really close that gap, because right now, there is a huge gap between all of these programs and services, and so anything that we we can do to launch that and close that gap, you you could potentially see thousands of people come here if you do this properly and make it easier for them to do step by step. The banks are ready, the county's absolutely open, we have the properties. We we've seen what the community development corporations are doing, and with a thirty thousand dollar down payment, I could, from the banking side, both my wife and I, when I can tell you, this is unheard of in many other communities that it's that high. Uh, but what you're seeing, uh, again, from communities in Baltimore to Atlanta, is they're really taking what they already have and just making sure that it's working. And so if we're giving away this, these thirty thousand dollar down payments, let's try to get them, um, into the hands of city-owned property and homes that are all we're really trying to do, because in many cases, um, these are still, uh, other residences, or excuse me, other buyers coming in that they're, they're using these down payment assistance for, and I just wanna see these programs really being linked together, absolutely. Um, because you can, you can knock out whole blocks if you do a program like this and an, and announce it properly. Um, and just bring them into city hall even to introduce this program, so what I'm really talking about is some type of overlap or overlay work between these organizations, so that they're purchasing homes, but at least they're purchasing homes on lots that the city owns in these, in these areas where we're trying to, to, to fill these.
Or even add on, it's to, it's to focus on residents that are living here.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The, the, one of the largest bits of feedback I have for this home buyers program is that many of them are renters who are already here, who either want to own the home that they're in or on that block, and so
That's the deal situation.
Absolutely, being able to advertise that as an opportunity, I, I don't think that we have, because we're not linking them all together yet, but if we can do that, it'll be very clear, it's, it, it, there's some great incentives to purchase a home here, and it, those incentives allow that, that, that price of that home to drop significantly. Which also has opened up the attention to many of those financing on the banks. We're, we're looking for ways to drop that w- without adding any more risk, and this does that. So anything that we can do to connect them to all of these programs at once, from the homes and the lots to the down payment assistance programs with some of our financial institutions, I think are gonna help.
And I think Fifth Third is probably one of the other banks that have a lot of, lot of resources.
USA Key Bank are, Huntington are four, and and two of those banks have already stated, if the city gives them space to do that program at least once a month, we can have residents come right into the community center or city hall and start this process.
Yeah.
Takes six months to a year for most people, sometimes less, many people don't realize that your credit score doesn't have to be what many people think it is to purchase themselves.
Executive Director of H R C's Runners Club, Keisha Allen, is a real leader.
Oh, yeah.
Originally in, uh, Fairland, so.
Yeah.
Right, how much, we have that for kind of a, so.
Yeah, I love that. So, uh, residential, uh, exterior repair, so, um, out of the five hundred thousand, a hundred seventeen thousand has been, uh, spent there, H P O repair, garage repair program, a hundred fifty thousand, almost all of it has been obligated. Um, thirty three thousand.
That garage was gonna be.
Of the tree program is getting close to being fully obligated, and then the driveway sidewalks, aprons and pathways, only seventy one thousand has been obligated um, so far.
Could you go back to the previous slide? No, not that one. No, 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 go, no, no, back where you were, there was a dollar number for the exterior program.
Oh, yeah, I think we missed that one.
Right under the down payment assistance, so you.
That's wrong, yeah, so that must have been wrong.
Over seventy projects have been approved, but only thirty thousand expended, is there?
No, this thirty thousand's wrong, I think the real number is. I think these are, yeah, they're.
Okay, all right. I thought that people were languaging out some of these projects.
I'm mixed here, 'cause some of them are not, they're not expensed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You can see my method, my brain is off, you know.
I got you, all right.
So Community Investment Fund, we talked about that a little bit already, um, third-party business, that's the U B I S contract. Business Assistance Program, that's the nine hundred thousand that we talked about earlier, part of that's going to Noble, part of that's going to Taylor, and the remainder is what the legislature signed.
That application is done?
Um, for.
For the businesses for U B I S?
Uh, I think there's another one, is that today, or there's another company?
And it's Wednesday, correct? Yeah, there's one more virtual seminar for interested businesses on Wednesday at ten thirty. The applications are open.
Oh, okay.
And they will take those applications through the end of the year and then do an assessment and review of all of those applications before they make a decision on funding.
And is it okay to say, Julie, if they, if someone needs access to that information session, they can contact you?
For sure.
This is Jay Kaufman, one F.
One F.
One M, one F.
Thanks, Adam.
That's the way this is, but. The inviting studies, these are, uh, have been in process, uh, Noble and Taylor's streetscape design is in the process of finishing, and actually, I'll bring it, Noble roadmap study is pretty much done in the same, the ten, the track. Nonprofit assistance, forty five, forty four percent of nonprofit assistance funds have been expended as of September thirtieth, much more since then. Um, so you can see this table, you know, um, its library spent the full amount, there's a few that still have involved that are like passive, uh, the C I C, and this one actually has been spent since September thirtieth, the Marla Wagner, which is the Benjamin Rose project.
Oh.
So it's it, really, uh, next steps is, uh, H P O and H R C, we're gonna continue through the winter, um, accepting applications and getting projects ready for construction season, finishing up as many lead projects as we can to be all that money spent. Um, ARPA reporting, we're talking about transitioning this stuff to the fire department once their capacity is back to normal. And then, uh, it should be back in February, which is soon.
I was just gonna ask you about that, because twenty twenty six is looming.
Yeah.
And so if we can see you quarterly, I mean, I'll speak for the next president, the council, that'd be fabulous.
Yeah, so at, at the end of the following month of each, of each quarter is when the reports appear, and after that's usually.
Great. Can we get a copy of the slide?
Yeah, as long as you don't prepare it for last.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said.
As long as you don't prepare it for last.
Oh, okay, well, maybe you can send an updated one.
And some numbers are off.
Maybe you can send an updated one.
In the creation of this line, I know several of the numbers weren't.
So let's get, let's get something with Jessica, you know, to roll this out. The exterior repair stuff and all the, you know, stuff that's traditionally done in good weather, the, you know, the outdoor uh, improvement stuff, uh, you know, ready for like February, March, when people start thinking about doing their projects and, you know, see if we can.
Yeah, applications aren't the problem.
Snow, but, but we s- but we still want.
We still wanna make sure everyone look positively.
Exactly, yeah.
The more often you do it, the more people see it, so.
Yeah, I just want everybody to have a shot.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Aorio, this meeting is adjourned.